Meetings act, the board secretary has forwarded notice of this meeting for advertising by having the date, time and place thereof posted in the Secaucus Town Hall on the bulletin board of the Education Administration Building as well as notice being provided to the Bergen Record, Jersey Journal and District website.
Flexon.
Apologies to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Bartletta.
Present.
Mr. Bolonino.
Present.
Ms. DiDetta.
Present.
Mr. Barry.
Present.
Mr. DiOmbri.
Here.
Ms. Gonzalez.
Present.
Ms. Kish.
Present.
Mr. Lewis.
Present.
You want to do the presentation of the school budget?
Yes, sure. Good evening and welcome. Tonight, our acting superintendent of schools, Dr. Daniella Reiser and myself, Grace Cho, business administrator, will present our 2023-2024 school year budget. I would like to begin by giving a brief overview of the budget process as well as the timeline. As I have stated in our past presentation, our budget process is a collaborative team effort. The actual process begins every November and ends in mid-March when the budget is submitted to the county for approval. In November, when the superintendent holds the administrative meeting, we discuss with the administrators the timeline of the budget. We set the due dates for when the budgets need to be submitted and when they will be reviewed. After that meeting, our supervisors then meet with the faculty to address their concerns and needs for the upcoming school year. Once the supervisors have compiled this information, they then meet with the principals and develop their budgets. These budgets are then submitted to me in December. In January, the superintendent and myself meet with each principal to review their budgets and staffing requirements based on their initiatives. In our January and February committee meetings, we give updates to the board as to the new programs we are reviewing and staff requirements that may be needed for the upcoming year. Please keep in mind that this is all tentative as state aid numbers are not released until the fourth Tuesday in February, leaving only three weeks to complete and present a balanced budget to our board and community. However, as our needs may change, as the budget is a living document, the district will always attempt to accommodate the needs of our community in educating our students and supply our teachers with the resources needed as we have done in the past. It is important for the community to know that numerous meetings are held with the administrative staff to strategize on how to best allocate our funds and that we are always keeping in mind the educational needs of our students and providing our teachers with the resources needed in preparing our children for a successful future while always keeping mindful of the financial impact of the taxpayer. So with that being said, the budget approval timeline for this year is as follows. On March 16th, the preliminary budget presentation to the community. On March 20th, the preliminary budget was submitted to our county and on March 24th, the county approved our budget. And tonight, we appear before the public to present for adoption our budget for the 23-24 school year. At this point, I would also like to discuss our budget strategies. When preparing this budget, our mindset going into this budget season was to provide funding for our programs and facilities while respecting the financial impact on local taxpayers, keeping the budget growth within the 2% cap as mandated by the DOE regulations, supporting the district's curriculum and technology plan while maintaining appropriate class sizes within the district. At this point, I would like to turn the presentation over to our acting superintendent, Dr. Reiser.
Good evening. I just want to highlight some of our accolades. So our district, as we all know, continues to be a top 100 school in New Jersey by niche as ranked by niche, is also continues to be top school in Hudson County, rated as an A minus overall, is ranked number 52 for most diverse district in the state of New Jersey. And specifically to the high school, received an A plus rating for college preparation of students and that's something we're very proud of because we do invest a significant amount of our budget into what we do at the high school level in order to get our students prepared for college. It's a consistent AP honor roll nominee for participation and performance in the AP exams and the amount or number of AP exams that we offer our students. And we always rank among top 20% in the state for graduation rate. We have a very high graduation rate and we're very proud of that. So on the horizon, we always discuss this, you know, going forward, what we would like to continue to do in order to strive to, you know, always, always get better, continue to update and supplement our Reveal Math Pacing Guides curricula and resources for all teachers in K to 12. We've been doing a lot of, a lot of looking into with our new Lincoln data warehousing and data analysis tools that they provide and the Alex that's provided for 3 to 12 in mathematics. We've been looking into math and the growth specifically of our students in math achievement as part of our, one of our district goals. And, you know, we're very happy with the progress our students are making. So I will highlight that as I highlight district goals going forward, I believe, at this board meeting. Continue to develop supplemental English language arts programming for all grades K to 12 and finally adopting our reading program in grades K to 2. That would be Amplify. It's something that a lot of our teachers have gone out to see from K to 3. Our special ed teachers just came back from a wonderful visit to the Passaic School District and we thank Passaic for that, to see it in action in some of our resource classes specifically for special education students. Seem to be very impressed with the programming. So that is something that we are adopting going forward for next year. It's going to really help our K to 2 faculty enact great ELA curricula. Expand the arts, culinary arts, business and STEM programming at the high school level. I believe in February was the time we adopted our new program of studies and through surveying the students on what they're interested in, in their, for their supplemental classes, they were very interested in more arts and culinary arts. Psychology was something they were very interested in at all levels, AP, Intro to Psychology, child development classes, and we will hopefully be able to offer that next year with the addition of that, of that specific teacher. Keep working on establishing associates degree program through dual enrollment and senior opportunity programs for students in grade nine to 12. We have really expanded our dual enrollment classes, you know, from the time that I was in charge of that to the time Ms. Christina Wisswasser took over. She's done a tremendous job of working with St. Peter's to expand that greatly and offer these students a ton of very affordable college credits when they're in high school. So we thank her for that. We continue to work on that and continue to offer high quality professional development to our staff and technology, mental health and all novel programming. So for the 2023-2024 academic school year, we are happy to say that this budget will include the addition of a much needed at the secondary level physical education teacher, pre-K special education teacher, elementary teacher and ESL teacher. Our ESL population is expanding and we are in need of another one at the high school level and assistance technician one, which is one of another IT person for support in our district. Grace?
Thank you. In our next slide, this budget also includes bank cap that is available for the 24-25 school year in the amount of $581,789. The district received state aid in the amount of $3,142,250 for the 23-24 school year, which include, which reflects a 7.1% of our operating budget. And we received $630,785 in debt service. This budget also includes an increase in the tax levy of $765,362, which equates to the 2%, keeping us within the state mandated cap. The district also received an increase of $358,640 in state aid based on the state funding formula. As you can see from this slide, our overall budgeted revenue from last year to this year has been reduced. This year, we have reduced spending from the capital reserve as many of our projects that have been placed on hold due to the shortage of materials and lead times required to purchase these materials. Also, our awarded grants have also decreased by $409,000 due to funds no longer being awarded for COVID relief. On a positive note, our debt repayment continues to decline on a consistent basis as we completed paying off one of our bonds last year. The district currently has one remaining bond left, which was for the referendum in 2014 for the middle high school expansion. At our April board meeting, the board approved a resolution to refund our current bond at a lower interest rate to produce tax savings for our taxpayer. The bond matures in 2034 and will be paid off in accordance with the original term and not extended. Providing the market cooperates, once a 3% net present value savings is achieved, the board will move forward to refund this bond. If the 3% net present value is not achieved, we will not proceed. The next two slides depict our expenditures for the 23-24 school year. Our largest increases in expenses are in the following areas: regular program and special education, central office and technology, transportation and employee benefits. The regular and special education increases are due to the hiring of our new staff. In central office and technology, also the cost for central office and technology has increased due to the hiring of a new technician who will provide, provide support to our staff and students. Also, one of our purchase lease agreements has expired and in renewing this lease, we maintain the same quality of Chromebooks, keeping us as a one-to-one initiative with the state of the art equipment. In transportation, like most districts, we are unfortunately experiencing a shortage of bus drivers and are having to go out to bid for this service. When paired with this increase and the prices of gas costs rising for transportation, the department, this has dramatically increased our costs. In employee benefits, the increase in employee benefits is due to the state raising the premium of medical, medical benefits by 15%. Moving forward, the board will be reaching out to our broker to investigate possible solutions of moving to other plans while maintaining equal or better healthcare benefits. Now, I know this is the slide that really affects most people. This is what our tax levy is based on, $765,362 and the average assessed home in Secaucus of $178,449. The increase to our taxpayer is approximately $5.28 per month. This is awesome. This increase, along with the increase in state aid, allows the district to maintain all programs for the upcoming school year. Thank you to the administrative TAF, I'm sorry, thank you to the administrative team and faculty for working together in making this possible. In order to lower and maintain our costs and utilize our funds in the most efficient manner, the district has entered into numerous consortiums. We entered an energy consortium, the school alliance insurance fund, the federal E-rate program, numerous co-op and joint transportation agreements, as well as a shared service agreement with our town for numerous services. We are extremely grateful to the mayor and town council who are always there to help and support our schools. Our next slide shows us that our enrollment for the last six years has fluctuated, which was due to the pandemic. As you can see, our enrollment numbers are increasing and will continue to increase, which is based on a demographic study that was completed in July of 2019. The district is currently in the process of having a new demographic study completed, which we hope to share the results with the community in the very near future. On behalf of the acting superintendent, Dr. Reiser, the Board of Education and myself, we thank you for your continued support and we remind all that Election Day is November the 7th, 2023. Are there any questions?
Yes, I have a question. You want to go first? So I appreciate that you explained how the process for coming up with the budget is. Really, that's my question is how the budget comes to be. It is one of the most important things that the Board of Education does is to approve this budget. And I am fine with the budget as it is. I know how much work, Ms. Cho, you put in and Superintendent Reiser, you put in with the administrative team to develop it. I trust you. I trust our finance committee who also went over the budget in more detail. But my real question is, the board as a whole does not really have a discussion about the budget at any point during the process. I attended in Atlantic City, the New Jersey School Boards Association had a session on this and they really suggested that the board come together and we also bring up priorities that really relate to our district goals. And we can't develop district goals if we don't have funding for it. So it's really important that we have some input. And I understand we are so limited with the budget. There's very little wiggle room there, but the little tiny bit that we can move funding around, it would be great in the future. Again, if we could include a board meeting, a public meeting, of course, where we have a full discussion about the district's needs so that the board as a whole can have input and not just limit it to the finance committee. And of course, I know that we had the opportunity to look this over in March when it was first presented to us. So I'm not saying that we didn't. It's just there was no set time for all of us as a board to come together and really discuss. And it would be based on what the administrators and all of those other meetings that come before. Obviously, their input is really important, but I do think that the board should have more of a say in how the budget is developed.
My question was regarding, I think it would be under the
My question was regarding, I think it would be under the line item, can you hear me? Of co-curricular extras.
I can't hear you.
Okay, can you hear me now? Regarding the line item for co-curricular and extra, I'm assuming that it falls under that category. So, I believe it was Friday night, Christina and I attended the Drama Club Talent Show, and we spoke to the heads of all of the schools, Uber Claridan Middle School and High School Drama Club, and they expressed to us their concern that they are struggling with their budget to meet their needs in terms of they have to buy, I believe they said, they have to buy the rights to whatever play that they put on each year. There's costume fees, lots of costs that go into putting on a production like that. I know the PTA is very generous in all schools, and they help out. I was just wondering if there was any wiggle room here or where that falls under? Would that be under the co-curricular and extras?
It does fall under the co-curricular and extras. The issue that we have faced in the past is if we give to one extracurricular club, then we should be able to give to all clubs.
Oh, so we don't provide budget for?
The only budgets that are provided for are for the sporting activities.
Oh, I didn't know that, okay.
But any other of the clubs that we do have, which that does fall under as a club, is fundraised.
They do their own funding?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anybody else?
Can I just ask what falls under co-curricular and extra?
Clubs and organizations, basically anything that's done, you know, outside of the classroom. So, it would be, there's so many clubs. I mean, there's so many clubs in each school that they have, but it's stuff that occurs basically on, you know, after school and on the weekends that are kind of, you know, organized by the schools.
That's not Drama Club?
Drama Club is one of them, yes. Drama Club is one of them, the play is one of them. The play usually is self-sufficient, usually with the ticket sales, right? And, you know, they have their own activity fund that, you know, where they get the money, you know, from certain fundraisers that they do, they put it in there. Last year's show kind of contributes to the next year's show, and that's how it's done.
No, that's not, not that I'm doubting what you're saying. The process is correct, what you're saying, but they had told us that there is no...
Because of the declining, they haven't had a packed house. No, listen, I met with Melissa a few times this year, I did, and I told her, I said, we can do what we can do, but we are limited.
And they're trying. I mean, they did the talent show the other night, and there were 50, I mean, how many people, 50 people?
Thirty-four.
Yeah, oh, 34. It was sad, you know? I mean, they're trying to fund, and I know that they plan to reach out to the PTA, who the PTA is so generous to them, and they help as much as they can, but, you know, I mean, maybe we could...
Look into what we can.
I mean, the problem is, if you look at the back of the SEA contract book, there's three pages of co-curricular activities in your elementary and middle and high school. And if we don't give to any of them...
So, what does this funding here go to?
That funding goes to the teachers who run the clubs.
Oh, we pay the teachers?
We pay the teachers for running the clubs.
So, it doesn't go to the club?
That's correct. It does not go to them.
Thank you.
I had a quick question on media services, which drops by 90%. What explains that drop?
That just explains the shift in the secretarial, being we no longer have a media specialist in the library. We at one time had our secretaries, there was also a secretary that supported that. They no longer support because as we, secretaries have retired, we have not replaced them.
Okay, we still have media specialists, we don't have a secretary for the media.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? All right, finance.
I would like to accept the recommendation of Business Administration Board Secretary to approve and adopt resolutions R 1.01 as described below.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion? All right, hold the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolonino?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Kish?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
I guess we don't have anybody speaking. So, before we leave, Grace, I just want to thank you and the entire business office for the tremendous amount of hours that you put in, not only staying late during the week, but coming in on Saturday and coming in on Sunday and giving up your weekends to get the budget done and get it approved by the county superintendent. You do a super job every single year, and I thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, motion to adjourn?
Oh, I wanted to also just say thank you to Grace and Dr. Reiser and the administration and the finance committee for all the time and effort put into making this budget work. Thank you.
And I echo those statements.
Anybody else? All right, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.